All right, we're beginning to order.
Bassett, here. Maggie.
President.
McGrane, here. Baxter, here. Harper, here. Thank you.
Moving on, the approval of agenda as presented.
I make the motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, a nay. Ayes have it. Moving on to public comment, for anybody from the audience that would care to speak. Here and none. Move on to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent amendment. Second.
Bassett? Yes. Maggie?
Yes.
McGrane?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Moving on to business items. The approval of resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-five. An authorization for payment of monthly city obligations.
Move to approve of resolution number twenty-three twenty-five.
Second.
Any discussion?
Bassett? Yes. Maggie?
Yes.
McGrane?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
All right, moving on to department reports. Water and roads.
I've just got a quote where the roads would actually be increased by forty-five cents a square yard.
Forty-five? How much, forty-five?
Forty-five cents.
Are you? Really?
I didn't know if there's any question about the water maybe coming through. We're out here as a question, but we're seeing right.
We will get you a permit. All right. If you're leaving, send me an email or something. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to cemetery and parks. Still working on the cost analysis of cemetery plots in the surrounding area. We're just a blimber and look, and it should be no shocker. It's Cambridge is a pretty cheap place to die. Though, I'm sure that at some point in time, we're gonna need to entertain judicious and careful increase in what we're targeting in our cemetery spots, perhaps maybe even how we're breaking the dome. And to include taking a careful look at like an urn, burial, memorial site. But right now, I don't have enough information or enough data to put together a report. I should have that done for next month. Parks, feel free to jump in here and tell me all of this. At this juncture, we're still looking at the little league ballpark system and the setup. Couple of different courses of action that we can be pursuing. One of them would be to purchase that property outright and get convinced schools to sell it to us. In my frame of mind, that makes the most sense, but then it would also put all the maintenance back on us. Which could be a little bit tough, but if we've got a little league that's gonna be active, a lot of those volunteers, those fields existed and look lost in the years that we had a volunteer crew taking care of it. There's no reason why we can't go back to that. It just requires the right kind of leadership. It sounds like they've got a couple of Spitfires working pretty hard to bring the Cambridge Little League back to what it was. Core LLC and the motor park, we worked through the preliminaries, we converged to a lease. Our cores are a limited liability corporation. We established an initial rental fee to Core for that space of a hundred and seventy dollars a month, which is simply covering insurance costs.
What does, what does Core stand for?
Cambridge Outdoor Recreation Enterprises. The way it would have been set up then is these would have been charged to the Jeep organization, the small engine organization, the RC organization, which is up and coming, and then they would have various events. The lease agreement worked out, a potential twenty percent take for the city on park events that are earmarked, those ones would be earmarked, I think, for park, city park improvements, it would be general funds with the city. It would go right back into park improvements, not just for the motor park, but for other parks and other spaces that were developing here in the community. Some safety inspection information. Prohibiting alcohol during competition and doing track times, once the track shut down, the, you know, those sorts of adult beverages can be enjoyed by the persons who are down there having a good time, but just doing things within the lease that any other judicious and wise landlord or landlord would do with regards to the space that they're renting out. Couple of snakes moving forward. The lease amount estimated is prohibitive to Core's Core LLC getting started because right off the top, they're paying a hundred and seventy dollars right now. They're having a little trouble getting a, a real solid read on where they're at financially. So, suggestion was made to potentially do a graduated fee system to get them started. That would alleviate some of that strain on them financially. I'm gonna go ahead and stand down from this part of the park process and pass it off to Bobby and to Mr. Dave. I got your back, brother. Anything you need from me on this. But the rest of the park park and the cemetery, library duties, I think I probably hang in there more my own still. But that part of it is starting to get to be, I, I gotta put a limit on what I'm doing. So I'm gonna pass all this information on to you guys this week. And with all that good.
Jenny, did you have a chance to review that?
I did.
Did you see anything whether on needing to change it to an LLC or to re- to an enterprise?
So, there was a core enterprise that was established in two thousand nine, but it's inactive. Funny thing is, the guy that did it, I think I know who he is. But I don't know whether any more research needs to be done on that end of it. I know that Dave was getting an LLC, tried to put together, waiting on the lease agreement. There's still some, some issues to work through with there. Yeah, handover whatever he got. He and I have been chatting about it, Karen, they've been chatting about it. It, it really comes down to, do you want a corporation running that park down there, or do you want the city to run that park down there? And if you really want to have a corporation or an LLC or nonprofit running down there, that's fine. I just think all those details of what the lease agreement's gonna be, make sure assurances are in place. You know, it's a fun, it's supposed to be a fun activity and whatnot, but there's dangers that have to be covered by the city, and if there's another entity, probably some liability issues with that too. So I have started the process and looking into that. We just had our meeting last Wednesday, we got more details then. I was hoping to get her mic tonight or whatnot. And then see where we go from there, so.
With the, with the limited liability corporation setup, insurance coverage is brought on by the primary entity who's doing the renting. And we carry our own package liability across all city properties. That one area is an estimate with regards to how much of our overall insurance liability insurance is paid for to cover that specific geographic space as a park. Yeah, I think if we can find some way to help Core get started, it's, it's gonna be, we're probably gonna have to all put running shoes on.
But I think Dave's enthusiastic, he wants it to go well and be successful, but you know, just making sure everybody is on the same page about what it's gonna cost. He doesn't know, and it hasn't been run out. So there's no, and there's no real good information from the history of it, so. Luckily, it's December, so there's not a lot of people that are, you know, wanting to go run out. One of the things that it said in the payment work that we got, whoever dropped it off in our mailbox, the bylaws, that was awesome. Thank you. I don't know how that showed up, but it said that the contracts were from February to February. So, there's some of that that's in the writer's seal, but just what the dates are. So we might have a little bit of time or we might have a couple of months. It really is really gonna be right, yeah.
Is there a time when we can all get together?
I would love that, yeah.
Still this month? Is it today? I know Dave is not here to ask, but.
I'm sure we can arrange it.
Together and it's probably pretty eager to be something happen.
Yeah, yeah. And probably great.
And let's get together and say.
What's Dave's last name?
R A S D.
You know, works.
Well, I think that we've been discussing this potential new signage for Cambridge, both here at the flag corner on the north side and then at the cemetery location. So we're doing some research on what those options are, what the costs are. And then I also introduced myself to Dale and chatted a second about trees. That there are some trees in the main part that need to be replaced, so if there's any assistance. However, that process normally has gone in the past, and we just wanna be helped, so if we need to be involved, we can be.
Yeah, that's great, so. Well, and I guess I should get your email. I know I sent it to Matthew a while ago, but Matthew's super busy. So I work in parks and rec, and I'm part of Iowa Parks and Rec Association, and so they, right now, for communities less than ten thousand people are giving out grants for anything parks and rec. So I'll get your email before I leave, and I can board it on and help you guys if needed, so. I was just like, free money, and they keep pushing it, so I'm guessing no one's taking it.
So I did do that, but I'm, I like to research and look into it.
Yeah. So. Yeah, and it's for small communities to help with trees or recreation and stuff.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna go with some perks. Moving on to library.
We might somebody meet.
Take a pastor. We'll come back. Uh, finances and economic development.
We're working on the booth brand to get. We have a steering committee with Iowa Economic Finance Authority that's coming down to meet with us, give us advice on how to grow, and we're gonna meet for one year and come up with some ideas. So starting January, and everyone's excited.
It's a baby.
They're gonna cheat you.
One of the committee members asked for a revise, but I don't think that's happening.
Give the finances. Moving on to communications. Real good with any radio beams or anything like that. Moving on to fire.
Now, our fire one, we see has been completed, so we now have that. This scatter either air and the spray flies.
We have that.
Again, we're putting something out tonight, I think, because they do the sugar bomb shopping where they're darkest to their kids. On the very same, or right before you guys having soup supper or during the same hour or something. Yeah. Is it on the city basement part?
No, it's the. Is it an apartment?
It's all departments, yes.
Okay, we'll have to share.
Pretty good. I'd like to ask Daryl. How would you love?
So, on behalf of the Iowa Jeep Club, we appreciate the community's support and hospitality and Jeep show that we host every September. We donate after the show a check to the Cambridge Fire Department. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, did you get it?
It ain't gonna be anything. You don't mean to see Daryl anymore?
All right. Matt, do you have anything extra to add? We're on fire right now.
Have we did the reports?
Yes.
Yeah, the fire one, three seeds completed, just wait until you use the paperwork come through, it's completed, pay for. The, just wrote our yearly check. Two hundred and ten calls come out of the seventy-nine hundred dollar check. Average of that would be about thirty-seven dollars per call. Average of about seven and a half people per call, so. We're getting a really good turnout per call. Got a great group. We've exceeded, everybody other than a couple of new members has exceeded the twenty-four hours of training for the year already. Well over. We've got some very very, people that are very excited to be on, younger crowd, which is, they're doing a lot of training, they completed their fire one. A couple of their fire two. And I think we have the leasing forum that are gonna be starting their EMT, having their first year, first spring semester. Cabinets are in. We just gotta get them put up and then give countertop order. Finish and trim.
Okay.
All of them are pretty busy, they're bodies up there to help, holy weather is gonna help.
All right, even on the fire. Moving on to police.
Then, unfortunately, targeting those areas, we discussed for four. Unfortunately, it's high and busy in those areas. Hopefully, it's helping. I really want to start a new few guys that have a chance to meet a gentleman, he lives in town. He owns the academy in Denver. Sometimes he's working all that, he's a lot of meetings and interviews. And we've got a couple of new people, we're waiting to get it.
Review the discussion with the police. Both of ours. Well, I suppose we take this time to thank Whitney and Raven for teaching that course with the guys. Been awesome. They're taking me away. And take this time to show up there and start our mission.
Where are our members?
Where, yeah, we're good, swear any members to me. So they're ready to go to January.
Where are we going to get your picture?
You should do it right in person.
Do it right on our. Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Love that, and I swear.
I'm Sheldon Scott, Duke Solomon Square, I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa. And then I head baby boy and then personally to the effect of my ability, discharge all duties of the office of councilperson in Cambridge as now or hereafter required by law.
I, I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, that I will faithfully and impartially be the best of my ability to discharge all duties of the office of councilperson in Cambridge as now or herefore required by law.
Ready for a discussion on both of ours? Anything? You don't say anything? You good? Good, right? Good, man? Okay. Moving on. If I'm good right now for public comments, just excited to start a new year with new people. Keep talking away with the deal.
I would like to share that the Jubilee Committee, we're discussing a name, rather they call it a Jubilee Committee, Jubilee Celebration. That includes the fire department, so it's not two separate entities that were working together. Our cheese bluser that we did on Saturday, that the pattern code hosted for us, we raised fifteen hundred dollars. So it was a very, very good turnout. We had lots of support. We're definitely looking for any other volunteers or community members that would enjoy being a part of it or have suggestions for fundraisers or know people that are willing to donate any prizes for upcoming events that, that we would like to sponsor. We're looking to host some more family oriented functions and maybe use the community center for that type of thing where the children and stuff are involved in it. They've spoken with the fire department about bringing back the firefights. And Mayor has put in their request for, what's the?
Special.
Huh? What was it that you asked that they do?
Blow the car.
For smashing.
Yeah, so we're just looking at, the next thing will be for us trying to track down any events for the park. A lot of times you have to reserve inflatables almost a year ahead of time. We might have a problem finding that. I have a connection for somebody that has a little train car that's willing to let us use that to use for selling tickets and see if we can get some food vendors to come in. Somebody was gonna reach out to those that run the vendor fair to see if any of those people would be interested in what I can do in a booth during the celebration in the park, those type of things. And of course, we'll meet with the churches who've always done games and stuff in the past, but and between that and then the Pop Beef Sunday that we did last month, we raised just over eight hundred at that one, so it's a great community support, yes. Yeah.
Is there a goal amount you're trying to fundraise or just?
We're so, we are not even sure what things are gonna cost. So that's why we're trying to reach out. We're gonna reach out to some previous committee members to see how they went about it. And we put a little bit of funds in the Jubilee on our budget, because we'll need the typos. And we do the firework with fire department type of thing. So just looking at maybe next year, what part of the city will pay for some of the things that are for the community and what part of the committee then brings those last. Now, I have to figure, we have to make an account because people are making checks to the Jubilee Committee where it just go cash in the Jubilee. So. So that's some of the next steps.
Yeah, Ballard East Elementary School is serving as a collection point for drink or toys for cats in conjunction with Casey's General Store and Fairway and Grove. I know in the past, the environment have helped us out. If private citizens are looking for a place to donate their new unwrapped, unused, unopened toy for toys for cats, the student council out of Ballard East Elementary School is happy to go ahead and accept your donation. We also do accept the cash donations, and we send the kids out to do a little shopping with a couple of the student council sponsors. So, we're gonna wrap up shop noon to twenty-second. Otherwise, I don't have time to get everything down to where it is to get to. Of course, that's definitely down under the same students. The cool thing about this donation is that stays right here to Central Ohio. Not that it gets the needy kids of Hobo in New Jersey or wherever, but I live there. And I love the fact that the drink or toys for cats will help some scripts out.
Good, any more comments?
Lori just got here.
Hello, Lori.
Sorry.
You're fine.
So we've added seven new patients in November, two for Cambridge, two for Elkhart, and three for Interlibrary Loan. Our door count was three hundred and twenty-nine for the month of November. Library checkouts in-house was two hundred and sixty-seven. Libby checkouts, two hundred and eighty, virtual of five hundred and forty-seven checkouts. I completed my hours for the library director certification, which was over two years, two years of classes, and the youth library certification, and that will be signed by the governor, and there will be a certification sent early in two thousand twenty-four. That I need to complete fifteen hours a year to keep that certification. One reason I was like, we're in the process of reviewing, updating all of the library policies, which we need to do every three years for accreditation. And we'll be working on the accreditation process starting in February. We are in a tier three, which is high, so hopefully it can be named, so we wanna keep that tier level. Um, we did send a request to raise the money allocation from Elkhart. And we asked for a twenty percent increase based on their population and the cost of divert services per capita. One of the board members did find that in the minutes that they approved it, and the increase would be nine thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And then I wanna follow up with the Elkhart City Clerk just to make sure I've been ready to go for in July when that would happen. Today, I finished a grant for ten thousand dollars for the purchase of handicap doors and wellness resources for our patrons and programs. So if we get that, it'd be awesome. So send any prayers your way. That'll, we'll find out in February if we're, we'll get that. It's from the American Library Association, and they're giving out, I think it's three hundred and fifty, ten thousand grants across the nation and two hundred and twenty thousand.
ten thousand grants across the nation and two hundred and twenty thousand dollar grants. And then the library board would request to be put on a work session in December or January to discuss how we're gonna do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
I make a motion later.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.